Good afternoon, welcome to the regular council meeting of Tuesday, June 6, 2023, in council chambers and via Zoom. We acknowledge that the Town of Kirkland Lake is located on the traditional territory of Algonquin peoples, including Beaver House First Nation and unceded territory of other indigenous peoples. We recognize the presence of Algonquin and Inishewabe, Wodjibwe Cree and Métis people in our community since time immemorial, and honor their stewardship and care of these lands. We hereby affirm our continued commitment and responsibility to reconciliation. I'll have a call to order and moment of silence. Approval of the agenda?
Moved by Councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by Councillor Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on Tuesday, June 6, 2023 be approved as circulated, and finally that sections 29 and 32A2 of the Town of Kirkland Lake's procedural bylaw number 1575, as amended, be suspended in relation to item 4.1 only, as to one, remove the time limit associated with the presentation delegation, which is section 29, and two, to permit ad hoc questions from the floor.
Thank you, all in favor? Opposed? None noted, item very unanimous. Item number three, declaration of pecuniary interest. None seen around the table, myself for item 6.5. So I have no pecuniary interest in the pole banner for the Legion. I will be stepping away as I am currently a Legion member. Item number 4.1, we'll now welcome John Middletop, MPP, to Mistamine Conference. Virtually.
Madam Mayor, it doesn't appear that the MPP is, has joined the meeting to date. If it's the will of council, we can resume at that time when the MP is available.
Okay, so noted, any opposition from the table for us to proceed? None noted, thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number 5.1, minutes of council and public meetings.
Moved by Councillor Rick Owen, seconded by Councillor Patrick Kylie. Be it resolved that council approve the minutes of the following meetings: minutes of the regular meeting of council held May 16, 2023, and minutes of the public meeting held May 16, 2023.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item very unanimous. Item 5.2, minutes of local and regional board meetings.
Moved by Councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by Councillor Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that council receive the minutes of the following meetings: minutes of the Kirkland Lake Public Library Board held April 20, 2023, and minutes of the District of Timiscaming Social Administration Board of Directors held April 26, 2023.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item very unanimous. Item 6.1, easement agreement with Hydro One Networks Incorporated, south end of Pollack Street, Brooklyn Rose on Acton Planning Administrator.
To Madam Mayor, to council, Hydro One Networks Inc. has requested to enter into an easement agreement with the Town of Kirkland Lake. The area is 340-meter-long section of mining claim L5941. It runs adjacent to the south portion of Pollack Street and heading toward Herbie Kirkland. Hydro One is looking to place new transmission communication lines, including poles and anchors. Council may choose to deny their request, however, that would not be recommended as they require the easement to install services. There's a consideration of $3,000 associated with establishing the easement agreement, and Hydro One will be responsible for the cost of registering the easement on title. So administration recommend that council authorize the execution of the easement agreement with Hydro One Networks Inc. along the south end of Pollack Street in order to support continued hydro service levels and infrastructure upgrades in the area.
Thank you, any questions from council? None noted, I'll have the reading of the motion.
Moved by Councillor Rick Owen, seconded by Councillor Patrick Kylie. Be it resolved that report number 2023, DEV 23, entitled "Easement Agreement with Hydro One Networks Inc., South End of Pollack Street," be received, and that council authorize the mayor municipal clerk to execute an easement agreement with Hydro One Networks Inc. over a portion of mining claim L5941 HR788, parcel 11314 CST, and mining claim L2880, parcel 8677 CST, and lane of plan M147 and part 12 of plan 5554 R3559, and finally that an execution bylaw be brought forward for three readings on June 6, 2023.
Thank you, all in favor? Opposed, none noted, item very unanimous. Thank you, Brooklyn. Item 6.2, amendment to site plan control agreement for 50 Goodfish Road. Again, Brooklyn Rose on Acton Planning Administrator.
To Madam Mayor, to council, the site plan control agreement amendment application was received for 50 Goodfish Road, Rose Castle Building Center. Yeah, we're proposing to construct a new building to replace the one that was there in 2022. The property has an existing site plan control agreement that was registered on title in 1991. The proposed amendment includes an updated site plan with the location for the new building, as well as locations for existing storage buildings and containers that have been placed in the last, you know, several years that were not included in the original agreement. It also includes some minor changes to the written portion of the agreement to capture updated acts and legislation. Council can choose to deny the amendment, however, this would prevent the applicant from obtaining a building permit and would limit any future applications. There's a user fee of $1,530 for site plan control agreement amendments, and then the costs associated with registering the document on title is borne by the town, but the costs are recovered through the user fee. And so since the proposed amendment to the site plan control agreement for 50 Goodfish Road complies with the town zoning bylaw, administration recommend that council approve the amendment.
Thank you, any questions or comments from council? Councillor Owen?
Yeah, through you, your worship. On the first diagram we were provided with, I can, I can see it clearly. The second diagram, I, I, I'm sorry, I can't read it. Can we get it put up on the screen perhaps? Because I don't want to approve something when I don't know when I'm approving and I can't. I can't make it, it's not. From my eyesight, it's not fine.
If you give me a moment, I'll share my screen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
And I'm not objecting, I just want to see what I'm approving.
While we wait for that, any further questions from council? Okay, oh, go ahead, Councillor Owen.
As was mentioned, under the previous site plan, certain things took place on that property that were not in agreement with the previous site plan. Are we going to ensure that when this site plan is registered, that this site plan is followed? Do we have a mechanism for doing that?
That would be through bylaw and property standard through the CBO as well, so it's standard.
But I would like to do it though.
I believe that staff always endeavors to do the best that they can, but. So some of the things that were placed at the time, they may not have required a permit because the original one is 91.
Yes, yes.
So it's likely that they were put in before the system was put in that triggers the site plan control amendment.
Thanks, Brooklyn, I forgot that a lot of those cans were placed there before the current regulations. So sorry, I didn't know who to say. Madam Mayor, if this is going to take an extended period of time, I'll just go on good faith.
Yeah, you believe that that first.
I, I, I believe that Brooklyn's done her homework and everything is wonderful, so it, it.
Oh, there you go.
I apologize, I'm having a little bit of trouble with the technology tonight.
So where's the actual building on this property?
So through you, Madam Mayor, to Councillor Owen, so it would be. So the road allowance is on the left side, you can see where it curves on Goodfish.
Good.
So if you go down, it would be, yeah, further down to the bottom. So part 21 there and part four is the property. And then I believe the next schedule will be. The next schedule would be the actual site plan.
So is there still, sorry, through you, your worship, to Brooklyn, is there still one vacant lot between the train tracks and the fish road?
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor, to council, yeah. So at the bottom right, there's a lot that is not owned by the applicant.
Okay, so basically, if I'm interpreting this correctly, he's moving his building closer to the train tracks.
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor, to council, so he's, the building is slightly smaller and it'll be rotated up and down instead of, so.
Okay, thanks, Brooklyn, I didn't mean to give you a hard time, really.
Anything further from council? Thank you, I'll have the reading of the motion.
Moved by Councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by Councillor Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that report number 2023, DEV 25, entitled "Amendment to Site Plan Control Agreement for 50 Goodfish Road" be received, and that council hereby approve the amendments to the Site Plan Control Agreement for 50 Goodfish Road, and that council authorize the mayor municipal clerk to execute the amended Site Plan Control Agreement and all appropriate documents, and finally that an execution bylaw be brought forward for three readings on June 6, 2023.
Thank you, all in favor? Opposed, none noted, item very unanimous. Are we still proceeding, Madam Clerk? Item number 6.3, supplemental, Town of Kirkland Lake Student Bursary. Alan Smith, Chief Administrative Officer.
To Madam Mayor, to members of council, the draft student bursary policy was initially brought before council at the May 16 meeting. Staff were given direction to revisit the sections of the draft policies which excluded the municipal elected officials and families of elected officials and town staff from participating in the student bursary program. The updated draft bursary policy before council this evening reflects the opinion of the town's integrity commissioner and the opinion of the town's legal council. Therefore, according to the town's integrity commissioner, having family members of municipal elected officials participate in the student bursary program does not raise pecuniary interest under the Municipal Copy of Interest Act. However, the act has contravened if council members participate in the decision-making process of evaluating the applications. However, we have just received information today that provides an exemption to this, which does not result in a pecuniary interest. This is when a member of council is involved in the funding decision in a capacity as educator and not part of council directing the funding decisions. In this scenario, the individual doesn't have a pecuniary interest unless a family member of that individual applies for the student bursary program. So from a purely MCI perspective, there is no issue for one councillor as part of their job to sit on the school's bursary slashing committee. That is not the same as the whole of council being involved in directing where the funds go. So an amendment to this draft policy will be required this evening to apply that exception. Furthermore, according to the town's legal council, having family members of town staff participating in the student bursary program does contravene the town's code of ethics policy. There could be a perceived conflict that could occur particularly involving participation of children and grandchildren of staff. Furthermore, participation of such family members could result in an employee receiving an indirect financial benefit resulting from a child or grandchild being a successful applicant to the student bursary program. So to summarize, the only restriction placed on members of council pertains to evaluate the applications. However, this does not pertain to individual members of council that have a role as educators as part of the job to evaluate bursary applications as long as they excuse themselves if a member of the family should happen to apply to the student bursary program. Immediate family of staff, namely children and grandchildren, are not eligible to participate in the student bursary program, however relatives like cousins, for example, can participate. Good, walk, any questions?
Any questions from councillor, councillor Owens?
Before we proceed, I just want to make it clear, I've jumped through enough hoops on this one with the integrity commissioner to cover my rear end, that I've got two letters saying I do not have any interest in any way, shape or form on this one. So that's why, that's why I've chosen not to refuse myself on this discussion.
Thank you, sir, anything further? Councillor Owen?
Yes, through you, your worship, to council. I'm wondering if we can defer this matter once again because it's council that approved the code of ethics for staff, and it's council that can amend the code of ethics for staff. I'm not comfortable with the fact that staff's children and grandchildren cannot qualify for this bursary just because of the way their parents or grandparents work. And I would like to see council investigate if we could amend the code of conduct, which apparently seems to be the problem, so that staff, the children and grandchildren of staff can have the same advantage as every other young person in this community. And hopefully council will agree to that, thank you.
Thanks for that, any further comments? Councillor Ranger?
I'm not in favor of deferring. I don't, if it was for a full ride and it was worth, you know, putting staff through and us to changing or making an exception, then yeah, but this is $500 bursary. There will be other bursaries and opportunities for employees of town or children can apply for and or the recipients of. At this point, I think we can, we know where we stand with the perception would be no matter what with the public, be that there could be bias. And so I think it's at this point something that we can give somebody in the community an opportunity by giving them the spending or the scholarship and that we can move forward.
Thank you for that, Madam Clerk, who are the mover and the seconder on this item?
For this recommendation, the mover and seconder are Councillor Janice Ranger and Councillor Patrick Kylie with an amendment on the floor to include the proposed policy be amended to replace that 51G to also include save and accept in their employed capacity as educators.
Thank you, so the motion to defer would have to come from either of those individuals?
No, a motion to defer can come from any two other individuals around the table.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder to defer this evening? None seen at the table.
I'd like a recorded vote on this, please.
Madam Clerk will so note. I'll have the reading of the motion.
If I may, if I may ask the deputy clerk to pull out the recorded vote sheets from the folder in my absence of council.
Thank you, sorry, Councillor Shaba?
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor, I just want our official from the clerk because we have a motion, but we don't have a seconder, so how can we proceed with the motion?
We don't, that's us.
Oh.
It's, yeah.
The motion, yeah, alright.
Yeah, the, the original motion is being read.
Alright.
Everything good? You want me to read, go ahead and read the, okay. Moved by Councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by Councillor Patrick Kylie. Be it resolved that report number 2023, CAO 008, entitled "Supplemental Town of Kirkland Lake Student Bursary Policy" be received, and that the proposed policy as presented be amended to replace 51G with the following: G, municipal elected officials cannot participate in the evaluation/judging applications for the town's student bursary program, save and accept in their employed capacity as educator, and that, and that council approve Corp. 2023 001 Student Bursary Policy as amended, and finally that Corp. 2023 001 Student Bursary Policy be inserted in the corporate policy manual. A recorded vote has been requested upon the request of Councillor Owen, Councillor Owen?
Nay.
Councillor Kylie?
Yea.
Councillor Ranger?
Yea.
Councillor, oh, sorry, Councillor Shaba?
Yea.
Councillor Owens?
Yea.
Mayor White?
Yea.
The yays have it, the motion is carried. Pardon?
Sorry.
Oh, I apologize, Councillor Dykens. The motion is carried.
Thank you. Item number 6.4, request for delegated authority on designated certain municipally significant events. Jennifer Montroy, municipal clerk.
Madam Mayor, through you to council, good evening, members. Administration's report before you this evening is a proactive approach in managing requests for designations of municipal significance for the purposes of obtaining a special occasions permit with the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario, also known as the AGCO. A delegation of council's authority will remove some governmental hurdles for requesting organizations and the requirements of deeming certain events known to the municipality bearing significance, significant benefit to the community. Every request includes a coordinated response through the clerk's office with the Director of Community Services, the Chief Building Official, and Director of Emergency Services, our fire chief, to ensure compliance with our town municipal alcohol policy and adherence with the AGCO's SOP requirements. This internal process would be maintained as status quo should council delegate their authority to my office or designate. Oftentimes, a requesting organization may not be aware of the timelines or its associated impacts, thus applying added pressure on the various agencies in approving designating within the parameters of what is best for the community. Administration's recommendation also takes into consideration that a delegation of authority remains a valuable tool for staff to provide customer service in a timely and efficient manner and realize significant time savings. And if delegated authority was granted and a letter of non-compliance was materialized, such an occurrence would be informally reported to council, and annually council will receive a memorandum regarding those events for which delegated authority was exercised. That is my summary, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, any questions from council? None noted, I'll have the reading of the motion.
Moved by Councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by Councillor Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that report number 2023, CLK 14, entitled "Request for Delegated Authority in Designating Certain Municipally Significant Events" be received, and that council, the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake, hereby declare the 2023 Canada Day event being hosted by Kirkland Lake Lions Club as municipally significant, and that council hereby delegates its authority to the municipal clerk or designate, to designate events in the Town of Kirkland Lake as events of municipal significance, subject to the event being in compliance with the Alcohol and Gaming Commissioner of Ontario's requirements for public events, and that the municipal clerk be authorized to provide any additional information and necessary documentation to the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario if required to demonstrate events of municipal significance. And finally, that an annual report by way of memorandum regarding those events for which delegated authority was exercised be prepared for council's information.
Thank you, all in favor? Opposed, none noted, item very unanimous. Item 6.5, supplemental, proposed updates to Town of Kirkland Lake user fees. This will also be presented by Jennifer Montroy, municipal clerk. This is where I will ask Acting Mayor Dykens to take the chair. We are separating two, one is the flagpole banner policy, and so I'll be stepping into the chair for this, and Acting Mayor Dykens will take over. Item 6.5, supplemental, proposed updates to Town of Kirkland Lake user fees. Jennifer Montroy, municipal clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you to council. First to be addressed is the notation of exclusion on pole banner installation fee within proposed Schedule G, which is public works equipment rates. As so directed by council on May 2, the report before you this evening contains information and the rationale on the costing options associated with the town's pole banner policy, specifically pertaining to the Royal Canadian Legion. The Royal Canadian Legion Branch 87 has a very well-established veterans' banner program in the Town of Kirkland Lake that recognizes and honors our local veterans through community and school activities. In both 2017 and 2020, and 2020, and then again recently, the Legion sought council's assistance hanging these banners for three seasons respectively. Each year, council has supported the request. As noted in the report, research on other municipal policies and user fees associated with veterans' banner programs in Ontario and Alberta was conducted. Those research take on the responsibility of the installation and removal of the street pole banners. The Legion were not required to pay for the installation and maintenance of the street or pole banners, and the cost was absorbed within the annual operating budgets. You will recall that on May 16, Schedule G was presented with amendments, specifically the notation to exclude the Royal Canadian Legion from installation fees in an effort to remove delays and adhere to the town's notice policy, which is done through the notice bylaw. It was then identified that if it's the decision of council to approve this change, the provision of formal notice is in accordance with the town's notice policy, and that would be met. However, if the decision of council this evening is to defer, reject, or amend the notation, a simple amendment could be undertaken to change or remove same. Given this research, the reoccurring requests by the Royal Canadian Legion, administration is recommending that the Royal Canadian Legion Branch 87 be excluded from the pole banner installation fee indefinitely. Madam Chair, that is the summary of this portion of the report. Once all questions from council have been addressed, the first recommendation on, sorry, the first recommendation on the agenda under this item should be read.
Thank you, Clerk. Are there any questions, comments, Councillor Owens?
It's more of a comment than a question, I think this rectifies a mistake by the previous council. I think it was an unintended collateral damage when we passed the motion last June that disapproved the suprise, so I think this is a policy that rectifies that mistake.
Thank you. And Councillor Owen?
Yes, Acting Chair. For me, the issue is not what organization is putting up the banners, but it is the veterans. It's the veterans that served our country so we could sit at this table tonight and freely and openly discuss issues that affect our community and make decisions. So for me, this is really, it's waiving the fee for an organization, but it's waiving a fee for an organization so we can say thank you to the veterans. And I just want to make that clear, it's not about the organization, it's about the veterans, thank you.
Councillor Owen? Anyone else, questions, comments? Are we ready for the motion?
Moved by Councillor Casey Owens, seconded by Councillor Rick Owen. Be it resolved that report number 2023, CLK 09, entitled "Supplemental Proposed Updates to Town of Kirkland Lake User Fees" be received, and finally that subsection 5.2 of Corp. 2022 006 Pole Banner Program Policy be amended to include the following: 5.22, the Royal Canadian Legion Branch 87 is exempt from the installation and removal fees associated with their veterans' banner program.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried, unanimous.
Somebody got the mayor? He's.
Thank you councillor Dykens will now proceed with the second portion of this report.
Through you, Madam Mayor to council, on May second, council received proposed updates to the user fees and charges. On May sixteenth, a public meeting was held, there were no comments made or received to date on the proposed user fees. At that public meeting, notable revisions to the schedule were presented as follows. Proposed schedule C, which is community services and the museum. Uh the Harry Hoodlums Day Camps, the description of the service offering was enhanced as follows for clarity, the proposed rate remain. Remained as presented, one child for one day was thirty dollars, one child for two days or two children for one day was fifty five dollars. One child for three days or three children for one day was eighty dollars. One child for four days or four children for one day was a hundred dollars. Proposed schedule H, public works waste management and uh schedule I, public works airport. Both the waste management and airport user fee schedule presented on May second were those identified. Uh in November twenty twenty one user fee by law schedule and did not capture the twenty twenty two approved fees or respective increases. No fee changes are being proposed for these two services service areas at this time. However, as such, those proposed schedules were updated to reflect the twenty twenty two approvals. Of those fees for service in order to remedy the oversight uh from twenty twenty two. Uh schedule G, public works equipment rates, parking lot rental fee. The establishment of the specific fee was uh directed by the former council. At its regular meeting held on May eighteenth twenty twenty one and was omitted in the November twenty twenty one revision to the user fees by law. Thus it being missed in the twenty twenty two amendments. As such, the fee for the parking lot rental of a hu- three hundred and twenty five dollars was added to the proposed schedule to remedy this oversight. And not those are my summer, that that is my summary for um May twenty, May second to May sixteenth to today.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Councillor Owens?
When the user fee by law got proposed or presented, I had asked or suggested to remove the twenty five dollar fee for the fire department. I see it still for fire burns, I see it's still in the current by law. At what point do we vote or have the discussion about picking this out?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to all of council, any amendments to the user fees by law would be done today.
Yeah, okay, so I would have proposed the amendment, but to have this. Remove from the bylaw?
That's correct. You need to get a mover and a seconder to remove fees from the proposed schedule currently.
I'll move it. Whoever wants to second it. There's plenty of hands to go around.
So I believe councillor Owen was the first to put up his hand. But there is almost a unanimous.
I'm I'm not gonna fight over my name.
Any further comments or questions from or do we have to dispose of that first?
Yeah, I'm just right, sorry, Madam Mayor, I'm just writing it out, so it's the fire permit fee, right, for twenty five dollars? And I believe that schedule is. Sorry, I'm just going through the schedule. I heard somebody say it. Schedule J. Okay, so I have a motion uh on the floor to amend. Uh that the. Uh recommendation be amended to moved by councillor Owen, seconded by councillor Owen. That the user fee related to buyer permit fee in the sum of twenty five dollars be removed from schedule G.
Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Anything further from council councillor Owen?
Yes. The last time is. I was brought to council, um I pointed out. That in almost every area of town services when people live. Outside town boundaries and do not support the service with tax dollars. They're charged a twenty percent surplus or. Twenty percent fee on top. Uh to make up for them not paying taxes. I brought this up in 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 the area of the airport. And I see that that has not changed. I do not understand and I cannot sit here in good conscience. Charging a little kid to go take out a book twenty percent more. When somebody who can own and operate their an airplane. Isn't paying a premium price, I think. Yes. So well-established policy in our policy. I recommend. That non-resident. Renters of hangar space pay twenty percent premium. And that non-resident airplane uh. Operators pay twenty percent um. Surplus fee for parking their airplanes at the airport. Then those I believe are listed both in there, two separate, I can't find them right now.
So do we have a from the floor to discuss this?
Hold on, Madam Mayor, I'm just going to write this out so that everybody knows exactly what they're um voting on. I just need to pull up the schedule to get the right wording here. I apologize, I'm doing everything digitally tonight, so I appreciate everybody's patience. Schedule I. So I understood from councillor Owen, it is a seeking uh the amendment on the floor, seeking a twenty percent. Uh surplus?
Yeah.
Start sorry surcharge. Surcharge for.
Uh hangar fees.
Hang uh under hangar fees, hangar fee per square. Okay, and what about and for the land lease for hangers? Or for the hangar office rental?
As well as as well as the land lease for hangers.
Okay, so hangar fee and land lease for hangar.
Yeah.
So both of those items.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do do we have anybody here um from the airport that could explain to me better the uh. The parking fees, because I may or may not want that included. Okay, well, let's for simplicity, let's leave parking fees out.
Okay.
Okay, because I don't. I don't understand what they are, I mean.
Yeah.
Let's just do the hangar fees for for this.
Okay, so who's the seconder for this amendment?
Would I second from the chair or would I have to sit step down?
You'd have to step down.
Okay, the second is just to get the discussion going, right?
Yes. Councillor Owens will second.
So up so moved by councillor Owen, seconded by councillor Owens. At that schedule uh that the recommendation be amended to uh. For schedule I, seeking a twenty percent surcharge for. Hangar fee and land lease for hangar for uh for daily, monthly, yearly hangar fee and. The land lease for hangar annual fee.
Thank you. Any discussions from the floor?
Councillor Ranger. Uh to Rick, I believe you actually brought it up during the budgeting meetings. It wasn't specific to when we were talking about the user fees and that's why it may have gotten missed and brought up now, just a clarification.
Councillor Shaba.
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor, I just like to know from the staff how many planes I've been talking about there. Uh are there any planes at the airport that we're trying to for, I don't know, maybe we're trying to uh solve a problem that anybody exists.
Well, Wolf, do you have any comment on that? I believe. They haven't dealt with it for uh since it was transferred over. Through you, your worship, I believe that there are four or five aircraft. I believe one is. A Kirkland Lake resident. But I'm not a hundred percent sure of that. I believe when you're talking about landing, it's somebody who flies in stays overnight. Uh it's not in the hangar, but I don't. I I don't, I just don't know enough about that kind of.
Any comments councillor Owens?
I mean, it it's it seems to me that this is not used locally, it's more for out-of-town use or. Non-residents, so I I see more these fees as being what should be charged. Like a a twenty percent increase on a hangar fee for nine hundred dollars, it's like it's still a often. Kind of change to to part a plane there. So. Yeah, I support it to get the discussion going, but I don't think it's they weren't so twenty percent increase, it's hard to compare an airplane to. I I wouldn't even compare it to books because you need to be charged a library to take books out. Okay, so to like taking a book out versus parting your plane, I think there it's hard to put them in the same category.
Councillor Dykens. Uh to Madam Chair to council, um from what I understand, to um they're bringing business to the town. Uh a lot of times it's for mining planes and uh so I I don't think it's in the same. Thing as somebody using like any other library book or they're bringing business to the town, so I I'm not sure whether twenty percent would. Would be definitely.
Uh the people that I know. That fly openly, it's their hobby. They're not bringing business down. I'm not talking about increasing landing fees. For mining companies that are bringing executives into town. I'm talking about increasing rental fees. For a service that as a taxpayer. I subsidize and so does every other taxpayer in this town subsidize. And yet they're living outside the town boundaries, they are not subsidizing that facility and we are losing. I think it's about a, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's around a hundred eighty five thousand, a hundred eighty thousand a year on that facility.
I don't think it's that much, I think it's around a hundred twenty five, but I think.
Well, it's a significant amount of money. And yet we're allowing people who aren't contributing to the maintenance. Uh or anything of that facility, not pay a premium price, it doesn't make sense to me. And yet we charge a little kid extra money to take a library or to go swimming.
Thank you. Uh anything further from council? For my part, though I don't speak often from the chair, um I do actually believe the same as councillor Owen. We do charge regularly for our other services that we provide that uh for members of outside communities. We do charge that premium, whether it be at Parks and Rec or whether it be the library, this is something that we do across the board. Except for this area, so in that respect, I do support councillor Owen uh in this idea. We do it for all other departments, why not this one? So there is no more comments, um I will call for the reading of the motion, thank you, Director of Economic Development. Thank you, sir.
So this is an amendment to the uh to the recommendation here uh. So moved by councillor Owen, seconded by councillor Owens, uh that the recommendation be amended. Um for schedule I. Specifically seeking twenty percent surcharge for the hangar, daily, monthly and yearly hangar fee. And the land lease for hangar annual fee.
All in favor? Opposed? Item defeated?
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Would you like me to reread the recommendation?
In a moment, I still have comments from um council members. Councillor Owen?
Uh no, I I was just gonna bring up another issue to the airport if I could.
Is this separate?
Well, we already voted on this motion, right, so it's defeated, so now we can move on, right?
Yes.
So.
So now we're going back, yes, so now we're going back to the user fee scale to the whole.
Okay.
Go ahead councillor Owen.
Through you, your worship to council, um many years ago, town council. Um discovered that Earleton Airport was charging three hundred dollars. For Medevac uh lands at the time Kirkland Lake Airport was charging much less. Um so at that time. Council increased. The fee we charged to three hundred dollars, but that's many years ago now. Did we check to see what Medevac is paying? To fly in and out of Earleton. Um. Because they seem to be setting the benchmark in which Medevac. Um pays and I would like to see us generate as much revenue as we possibly can. So just to reapprove three hundred dollars. Without looking into it, doesn't make a lot of sense to me, thank you.
Thank you. Any staff member with any? Intimate knowledge of. Comparables?
I believe that. Richard was checking the comparables on that annually, but I can't confirm it.
Thank you councillor. At this point, I'd like to put forward a motion to have a full financial report of uh airport costs and expenses. So that we can review comparable to other airports in our area, what user fees they have compared to ours. I can't make and vote on decisions when I don't have actual statistical information in front of me and it's just guesswork. Can somebody second that motion?
Uh um one moment, Madam Mayor. Um. I'm just looking at the user fees on the um Earleton Timiscaming Regional Airport site here.
Councillor Owen has it as as well.
Yeah, there's no fee for the ambulance there, I guess, specifically.
No.
Goes by way, it goes by way to the plane, there's no Medevac specific fee.
That's correct.
Okay, so that answer, that question has been answered until we can't move forward until we either get a seconder for council rangers.
Just the point where I I didn't understand what was correct. Like the information, what was verified?
There is no, there is no comparable fee. For air ambulance. On at the Earleton Timiscaming Airport on their uh noted on their website, which is user fees starting September twenty fifth twenty twenty two.
Through you, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Councillor Owen?
Just a clarification, though, they're charging by way to the plane, right? So therefore there is a charge when Medevac.
But not specifically, your question is specific, so what we do have. Is councillor Ranger supporting your idea that we don't have information, so.
Yeah.
Madam clerk, yeah, madam clerk is. Is this proper procedure?
So what we could do is we could exclude schedule I from the from the discussion this evening. To be brought forward at another date, because it appears as though there are many um. Concerns or unanswered questions about the airport, uh so what could occur is. Um that council, if it's the will of council, it can go ahead with uh amending the user fees by law. Save and accept the inclusion of schedule I, which will need to be reported back on.
Okay, so do we? Can we specifically just amend the motion that we're working on now? Or do we proceed specifically with councillor Ranger's? Request?
Did you get a seconder for councillor Ranger's request? Because I don't really know what councillor Ranger asked for.
So councillor Ranger asked for a deferral specifically on the airport. Until which time a full reporting of um.
The fees?
Yeah, the fee. Yeah, the fees and revenues from the airport. Because we cannot make informed decisions if we do not have actual facts before us. Councillor Owens did second that.
Councillor Owen did? Okay, so that's, that is, that is germane to the, to the intent uh, of a reboot or ex, I, what, what I will say is removing Schedule I from the discussion this evening. So, uh, moved by Councillor Rangers, seconded by Councillor Owen, that Schedule I not form part of the user fees and charges. So the only concern that I have is that there needs to be some kind of user fees established for airport. The bylaw this evening won't be able to go through because the bylaw will be significantly altered. Uh, the bylaw will also be required to, um, be amended because right now the recitals within that bylaw identify that, uh, it takes force and effect on June first. But if you es- essentially do not ha- and repeals the previous bylaw, so if in e- in essence you do, do not have anything in terms of fees, uh, associated with the airport this evening, um, you would not have any fees associated with the airport. So that's, that's a problem. Uh, so the, the bylaw could be deferred as well, um, if that's the will of council to, to, to do that.
So, okay, so we knew going into this evening that there would be changes. This was specifically set out for council to voice their concerns and their opinions. So doing such at this time, making those changes now sets out the requirement to defer this decision altogether?
To defer the bylaw to be passed this evening. Because the way the bylaw is read, or the, the way the bylaw is presented to council, it identifies a repeal of the previous, um, bylaw. But by removing an entire schedule from the bylaw, you now have no fees associated with a specific, uh, service, um, department. So that is a cause for concern. If you were to go ahead with the bylaw this evening, you would still have um, a bylaw of user fees, however, you would have no fees associated with the airport entirely.
Sorry, Councillor Owens?
Okay, I kept on searching and in the airport lingo in Ontario, MOVH is Ministry of Health. So an air, an air ambulance is three hundred and fifty dollars in Earlton. Yeah.
Thank you.
If Google's your friend, you're the best.
Okay, so any comments about, um, not continuing with the user fees as per Madam Clerk?
Hold on, we can't, we can't have that discussion right now. There's a motion on the floor to, it is to remove Schedule I to not form part of the user fees and charges this evening. The, the reason why I had spoken to council about that is to show, explain to them the impact of that would be in terms of the bylaw this evening.
Okay, so Councillor Ranger is going to speak to her motion.
I, I'm going to withdraw my motion so we can continue, um, with this current bylaw and I'll put forth a motion after to get a report about the airport.
So noted, most, the motion is withdrawn by the boober.
Okay, so continuing on with the original motion of user fees, anything moving forward with the user fees? Councillor Owen?
Now that we know that Earleton is, sorry, through you, your worship to counsel, now that we know that Earleton is charging three hundred and fifty dollars for Medevac flights, I suggest that we increase our fee to three hundred and fifty dollars to match the area rate. Thank you.
Need a seconder, Madam Mayor?
Councillor Kylie, are you seconding? Councillor Kylie is seconding?
Okay, moved by Councillor Owen, seconded by Councillor Kylie, that the recommendation be amended to reflect a an increase to the, I'm just gonna pull it up. To the air ambulance fee. Noted in Schedule I to three hundred and fifty dollars. Is that correct? Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimous? So now we are proceeding with the user fees as a whole. Any further comments or questions from council? None noted. Madam Clerk, I will have the reading of the motion, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Moved by Councillor Patrick Kylie, seconded by Councillor Janice Ranger. Be it resolved that report number twenty twenty-three, CLK nine, entitled Supplemental Proposed Updates to Town and Kirkland Lake user fees be received and that council authorize the municipal clerk to amend the user fees and charges established by various town departments and divisions as presented and amended. And finally, that the bylaw and associated schedules as amended be brought forward for three readings on June sixth, twenty twenty-three.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimous?
Madam Mayor, uh, John, sorry about cutting you off. Uh, MPP Vantoff has, uh, joined us now if you want to move forward with his delegation.
Yes, Madam Clerk, thank you. So we will now, uh, welcome item four point one, John Vantoff, MPP, to Misskaming Conference. Virtually. Welcome, sir.
Hi.
Good evening.
My, my apologies for being late. I was in the house and I was hoping that you would still be meeting by the time I got up.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming. So John?
Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
You can proceed, Mr. Vantoff. Do you have something you would like to share with us?
Uh, sure. I, I, um, thank you very much for the invitation. Um, I will, uh, shortly open the floor to questions. It's just, uh, so this is our last week in the ledge. Um, I would like to be there in person, but, uh, uh, not the case. Um, so, uh, I got some questions that you sent beforehand. Um, but if, uh, I think the easiest thing would be, uh, if you just, uh, ask the questions verbally and we have, uh, an open conversation and see how we can work together to, uh, work for the people of Kirkland Lake. We are, we are all working for the same people. So with that, the, I'm open to questions.
So, uh, Mr. Vantoff, our CAO will proceed with the questions as presented earlier.
Perfect.
Uh, to Madam Mayor, to members of council, uh, yes, uh, the questions that were sent to you, um, I will just review. The first one is is there any grant funding for municipal busing?
Um, so to the best, and we're still looking, but to the best of our knowledge, um, uh, the municipalities that have municipal uh, transit get increased gas tax funding. But we have to look to see if a municipality is going to start a municipal transit system, um, how that is accessed.
Great, thank you.
And it could also, I, um, just to add, I'm not sure this is just a shot in the dark, but it would be worth us to look to see if, um, depending on how you word it, if maybe we could get, uh, the Heritage Fund to, uh, to, and, and we'd have to see how we word that. I don't think Heritage Fund actually gives money for buses, but it depends how you word it and you grow rapidly growing community workforce, you know, you know, blah, 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 blah. Okay. Um, this is very informal by, so I hope it's, okay. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Um, I'll go to the next question. Uh, the province announced one point two five million in affordable housing units over the next five years. How do we get funding this way to Kirkland Lake?
Yeah, so that's, uh, one point two five million over five years isn't very much. So we will, we are, we are still looking in the, into the process. I'm assuming there's an application process, but I haven't seen it yet. So we will, uh, I'm not gonna tell you things I don't know. So we will, uh, look farther into it, but that, that number seems awful low. Just to me, like, if you divide it over four hundred and forty municipalities, like, it's, it's negligible. Right? And that, that is, that is part of the problem, like affordable housing and, and I believe some of your questions touch on it later. Um, affordable housing, we have a housing crisis in this province. Um, and it's not just in the big cities. It's, it's a, it's a small town thing as well. But also an affordability, uh, issue because, um, a lot of people can't afford the housing stock that's available. And that's something we traditionally haven't had an issue with in Northern Ontario, but our housing costs have rapidly increased as well.
So while, dude, given that we're on the topic of housing, I'll just skip to the housing question since we're on top, okay? Uh, the current provincial government is determined to see one point five million houses built. Instead of mandating municipalities, why can't the government build a share of those houses that can be affordable? It was done before twice to be precise, after World War Two and by the big blue machine of Bill Davis and also by Pierre L. Trill government. So I guess the question is, um, you know, how can we, are taking more affordable housing?
Yeah, uh, and actually it was done one other time, the last time, and that was, uh, um, social housing stock was built, uh, in the early nineties. It was, uh, under the Bobbery government. It stopped. The last social housing that was built was, uh, at the end of the Bobbery government and was stopped by the Harris Conservatives. Um, this government is, um, what's the word I'm looking for? I'm, I'm, I'm not going to try and be overly partisan. I'm, I'm just going to say, say it the way I see it. Um, this government does not want to invest in the housing itself. It wants to change, it, it's changing lots of planning rules, some not very good, and we'll come up with that with Bill twenty-three to, to get the private sector to build all the housing at, at, on a profit basis. Um, they are putting very little funds into actual affordable housing. Uh, we bring this up a lot in the legislature. It just came up today in the legislature and the city. These numbers are maybe not a hundred percent relevant to Kirkland Lake, but they are relevant. So to own a house in the city of Hamilton, to be able to buy a house, you need, I think, a family income of two hundred thousand dollars, which puts it out of the realm of a lot of people. And so, but the governments, the government, this government has adamantly demonstrated they are not into investing in the housing stock themselves. They believe the private sector will solve their problem as long as they make the rules lax enough that they will invest. And we bring up constantly that that might not be the case because the houses that the private sector makes the most money on aren't necessarily the affordable ones that a large part of our population needs. And I'm not knocking the private sector. If you're a house builder, you know, I, 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 if I was a, owned a house building company, I'd build the houses that made me the most money. But, uh, but as a government, they need to look at what housing people actually need.
As you mentioned, uh, Bill twenty-three, and that's actually, uh, it mentioned in one of the questions, so I'll skip to this one. Uh, what is our NP, NPP's take on Bill twenty-three? I do not believe it is of utility to us here in the North, especially when it comes to reduction in development charges. So what, what's your take on Bill twenty-three?
So, Bill twenty, um, so, uh, our official take is we, uh, uh, voted against it, uh, twice. Um, spoke against it, um, very vigorously and for, one of the main reasons is the development charges. Um, the government is saying, okay, so we're gonna give a development charge holiday. That'll make the houses cheaper. The number they use, they're using is uh, it'll make the average house a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars cheaper. What they are failing to say is that if you can't charge development fees, then when the municipality has to provide the infrastructure like roads, sewers, water, that, that cost falls on the current the current tax base, not on the new tax base. Uh, the government's response to that is, well, the municipalities across Ontario are sitting on billions of dollars of reserves and they're just going to have to eat into those reserves. Um, that is not an option, as you know. Um, reserves are there for a reason. Uh, the Minister of Municipal Affairs, Mr. Clark, has stated a few times in the legislature, but not lately, he's backtracked on that, that he is, um, that the government will keep municipalities whole. So if they're spending, you know, um, big dollars putting in um, infrastructure for new, new developments that the, and that this cost is more for Bill twenty-three, they will come and the government will come and write a check. But in the new budget, there is no money for that. There's no, no line for keeping municipalities whole. So, and that the line that the government uses all the time is that what they're doing is waiving development charges for low income units and but municipalities already often did that. The, the issue is they're waiving all development charges for, you know, for big developments, for condos, for, you know, McMansions and, and so one, um, uh, it's going in, in, pardon me, in municipalities where there is rapid growth, uh, one will look as, uh, Brampton. Brampton's talking about like an eighty percent tax increase if they have to pay this all. So, something's gonna break. Like, the government is so focused on changing the rules to get people to build houses that they've forgotten why, what these rules are actually for. Right? Right? Because development, you can't build a house without services. So our take is that twenty-three, as many of the other governments' policies on housing, tw- twenty-three is one of the most egregious ones, especially that one.
And the final question that was, uh, sent. Is there any initiative to enhance training for transport drivers licensing in Ontario? We are seeing many accidents and deaths in Northern Ontario caused by inexperience and a lack of training for our new drivers.
Yep, that is a big concern. Uh, I probably, um, I would say, uh, since I've been elected, so I've been at this job for twelve years, it used to be our number, our number one, uh, call was winter road maintenance. And that has changed to, um, general highway safety. And including, um, aggressive drivers by aggressive commercial drivers. Um, we have, uh, spoken to the ministry lots of times, spoke on it lots of times. The ministry has moved on a few things on the highway safety part. Um, they're not moving very quickly on the, um, aggressive driver, aggressive driving by transport companies. They are hitting a couple of roadblocks. Um, one is, and I'm, it's not my job to stick up for the government, but I'm gonna say, say, say what they're facing too. So, um, if they get if they push too far, too fast, and you're seeing it already, they push too far, too fast, the aggressive, uh, the companies who, who are skirting the rules somewhat simply plate their trucks in another province with le- with more lax rules. You know, so, so if you go on the highway now, you'll see a lot of Manitoba plates. And that's one of the reasons. So where we're pushing back, and this leads to another, it leads to another issue I'd like to talk about. Um, where we're pushing back is, okay, so if we can't, um, we could police the driving schools better and, and we should because there's not very, very good policing there. So we have some local driving schools that were fine, but, and some in, in the bigger centers that are fine, but some that aren't. But we could enforce the rules much stronger, right? Um, even trucking companies come to us and say like, why aren't the weigh scales open a lot more? Why aren't, right? Because if you have to go, and if you're running, if you're running a trucking company, I, I'm sure they don't love weigh scales. But, right? If the way, if you knew the weigh scales were open, you would, uh, and we are pushing the government very hard to do that. One of the issues with that is the, um, the OPP and also the MTO, uh, correction or enforcement officer. and also the MTO, uh, correction or enforcement officers. Um, they are vastly understaffed right now. They're facing the same staff issues as throughout the economy. So but we are pushing, uh, spoken to Minister Mulrooney a lot of times, she's very aware of the issue. I don't think, uh, I don't think that highway safety is really a partisan issue. I'm not gonna stand there and say, you know, the Tories don't care about, because that's, that's not the case. I disagree with them on a lot of things. Disagree with some of the things you're doing in the highway as well. But, um, uh, we could do a better job on training, but I think it's gonna take a much stronger enforcement of the rules that we have. And, you know, in the example, and we all come from Northern Ontario, just north of us, there used to be um, Matheson, they used to send the rookie cops there for training, and no one ever speeded through Matheson, right? Because you knew you were gonna get a, a ticket or close to it. Now they've just closed the detachment at Matheson. Right? So those days are over. And we're about to lose, we haven't lost it yet, but, uh, the detachment in, uh, Noelville, which is also in, in our riding, is also threatened foreclosure. And so I, I truly believe the OPP is going to do whatever they can to, to do the, provide the best service they can. But that is a problem, that we're short, we're short of officers.
Thank you for that. I'll open the floor now to council members. Is there any new questions? None noted. So we thank you very much.
I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing.
You're very thorough and you always bring us, uh, not the greatest news, but at least the best news you can.
Well, I, 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 uh, very proud to, to do this job. I try very hard to, um, where, where the government, where I disagree with the government's policies, I make sure they know it, and our party does, but I try very hard behind the scenes where we can work with individual ministers. Um, I do, and if an individual minister does something, I make sure, does something right, I make sure that people know it as well. So we are, uh, just as an example, so, and unfortunately, it's, well, it's not in Kirken Lake, but if you go through to Mississauga Shores, they lowered the, um, speed limit in front of the school there, in front of Acose Saint Michel, and they've been trying to do that for years. And we couldn't get anywhere with the MTO. The MTO is very, um, intransigent. They're always worried about, I think, setting a precedent or I don't know what. And there, uh, there's more to come there, but that was Minister Mulrooney who, uh, who changed that. And so where we can, and I give credit, so, so if there's something, if something comes up, please feel free to contact me. And, uh, if there's something I can do behind the scenes, I'd be happy to do it.
Thank you so much for your time. We appreciate it that you joined after such a long day.
Anytime, okay.
Thank you so much. You have a good evening.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye now. Okay, so we're good to proceed with item number seven, considerations of notice of motion. Item seven point one, councillor Dykens, public transit for Kirkland Lake.
Madam Mayor, before you move on to the notice of motion, would you like me to read the recommendation?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Dolly Dykens. Be it resolved that the delegation entitled "Update and Discussion Regarding Municipal Affairs in Kirkland Lake" be received for information.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item so carried. Thank you, Madam Cork.
Sorry about that, Madam Mayor.
No, no, you're absolutely right. Correct me. Item number seven point one, councillor Dykens.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, to council, so I don't, you know.
Yeah, if that's the way, or if you have something to add, yeah.
Okay, um. So the matter of passenger bus service came up for me during the election campaign as I was, I was listening to voters. A resident who resides in Chapew Hughes area asked about the possibility as he does not have a vehicle and needs to get a Swastika from time to time and into Kirkland Lake on a regular basis. Another resident who resides in Swastika, who does have a vehicle, but is concerned about the environment, enthusiastically endorsed the idea of a passenger bus service and said that she and her family would use it. It also brought to mind a resident who walks to and from work each day for thirty minutes each way, taking a cab to work only in the worst of weather so as not to be at work in wet clothes, but not really being able to afford it. And recently a friend emailed me two links to possible government funding for such a service. Not having a passenger bus service is a gap in the current transportation network in place for the residents of Kirkland Lake. This gap negatively affects both the economic and social well-being of our community. Connecting all residents to vital services and to one another supports the economic development over town and the quality of life for our residents. Not all Kirkland Lakers have a driver's license and/or a reliable vehicle. Not all Kirkland Lake residents have friends and/or families to rely on to get them where they need to go and when they need to be there, or can afford taking cabs on a regular basis. Environment is becoming more of a concern to more residents, and the high price of gas is also a concern to Kirkland Lakers. There is a gap in our transportation network. Kirkland Lake is in a new era. A brand-new, state-of-the-art, future-ready passenger train will be serving Kirkland Lake through Swastika beginning in twenty twenty-six and partnering, partnering with municipal transits. As the mayor has said on occasion, uh, it's thanks to the efforts of councillors Shaba and Kylie that the train will be stopping in Swastika. New technology and funding options are now available to make the viability of a passenger bus service at least a possibility. I believe it's time for a fresh look into options of a passenger bus service for those who find themselves in that transportation gap. Those who cannot afford the current options available, and for those who want to minimize their carbon footprint that this take place at this time and funding options being brought forward. I would like to thank Kirk Montreal after our last council meeting. She mentioned to me about the dynamic dispatching program or, or process that the city of Northbury utilizes. So I just wanna say just a few words, uh, and this is from their website. So instead of the fixed rate, fixed route service that we're all familiar with, so instead of that, riders are able to download an app to book their trips. And using the app or people who don't have an app, they can telephone it in. Passengers can select a pickup and drop off location and confirm the ride. Once the ride is booked, dynamic dispatching technology matches multiple passengers headed in the same direction into one bus and directs passengers to a convenient bus location. Uh, the app, of course, is available for download, but it will provide a time of arrival information as well as allow for real-time bus tracking, so you know where the bus is at any time. Dynamic bus dispatching is used during low transit demand times and in areas where fixed routes are most inefficient and expensive, with the aim of reducing wait times, providing more direct trips, and improving efficiency. I mentioned dynamic bus dispatching as one example, just to illustrate my point that new technology is now available along with funding options to make the viability of a passenger bus service a possibility for Kirkland Lake. I ask that you support this motion so that information can be gathered and options presented so that hopefully we can close the transportation gap and better connect all Kirkland Lakers.
Thank you, councillor Shaba. You're the secondor. Do you have anything to add at this time?
Uh, not a lot. Um, I would say that, uh, looking at international students that we're getting in Kirkland Lake, uh, speaking to some of them, uh, we have three problems, uh, for them in Kirkland Lake. Um, and, and the only one that's really, that we can address would be the transportation gap. I mean, we don't have a viable residence for them to live in because of the housing prices. And we've got a lot, we don't have Walmart. That's another, that got a border, a Walmart, you know, on the district. So the third, that, that is that transportation, which we do not have, which we can address. So I'm in full support of, uh, for this. This is something that I've been thinking about. Uh, uh, not only for our international students, uh, but also for senior citizens that may not want to drive, uh, especially in wintertime. So, uh, I think this is something that we should seriously look into. I do realize that, I mean, I was not on council, I don't, I'm not aware of the circumstance leading to the cancellation of the service, probably financial or low rent or shit, whatnot, but, uh, where I said to councillor Dykens that that was then, and this is now. So we have to take a look at it again and see if it's gonna work out the same way the Terron Northland is taking a look at the passenger train service again, to see if it's gonna be viable. And I believe that, uh, um, my colleagues, the moment of, and on, in here and, uh, and councillor Dykens, you guys had a very interesting conversation with the VP of Ontario, uh, VP Passenger, Ontario Passenger Service from Terron Northland, and there are a lot of best practices that, uh, she shared with, uh, with some of you on how that could be implemented if you could, uh, run and look. Uh, it is very, uh, it is something that we have to look at it very seriously, and not just get hang up, uh, about what happened in the past. Thank you.
Okay, that, I will open the floor to other members of council. Any comments or questions? Councillor Owen.
Sir, you, your worship. I'd be all in favor of having a bus service. That would be wonderful. But what are we gonna give up to do it? Bus services cost money. And as we saw from MPP, Van Toph, there's no obvious, uh, funding source available at the moment. Now, in my years on council, I've never been asked for a bus. I've been asked to have the sidewalks maintained properly many, many, many times. When we did our budget survey, I don't recall seeing anyone asking for buses. I would have rather seen this, uh, request come at budget time so we could have allocated funds for staff to do a proper looking at providing a bus service. Uh, now we're coming in, in the middle of a budget. We haven't allocated staff money for this. We have other plans on the books in terms of roads and sidewalk maintenance that need to be met and require staff time. Yes, I would love to see a bus service. But I, I really do not want to see taxes increased. And I was here before, and I know that was then and this is now. Trust me, when I walked from my house to town council tonight, I can tell you the difference between then and now. But, um, we had a bigger population at that time when we had a bus service. We reject, uh, uh, shouldn't say we, council rejected, or staff rejected the schedule several times to try and increase, uh, bus ridership. It, it didn't happen. And I think, and this is just speculation on my part, when the province came in with accessibility, um, requirements for buses, that was the final blow in, in our bus service. So, yeah, I'm all in favor of a bus service, but we gotta be able to afford it, and we gotta, if we go that route, we gotta decide what we're gonna give up so we can pay for it. Thank you.
Councillor Kylie.
Yeah, uh, I can appreciate, uh, councillor Owen's concerns. Uh, I, I think if we could, uh, have a staff member department, I don't, don't fool it, uh, take this on, but, uh, do an in-house study to determine what is available funding-wise and, uh, what services that we could possibly survive or, uh, introduce, whether that be, uh, bus service, uh, certain days of the week, uh, or whatever opportunities that, uh, come forward. Um, so I would recommend that, uh, we refer this to staff for an in-house study, uh, to see what we can come up with. Not looking for, uh, a miracle worker, but, uh, some ideas that, uh, might, uh, help us in this situation.
Thank you. Uh, just before we continue with discussion, I'm gonna have Madam Cork read the motion. We seem to be kind of deviating and, and getting off what is supposed to be being decided this evening. So Madam Cork, would you mind reading the motion?
Uh, no problem, Madam Mayor. Moved by councillor Dolly Dykens, seconded by councillor La Chaba. Where, whereas a reliable transportation network to get people where they need to go on time safely and with minimal stress is absolutely critical to the economic and social well-being of a community. And whereas a, a key part of such a network is well-functioning and convenient passenger bus system, and whereas the town of Kirkland Lake does not have a passenger bus service connecting its resident, residents to a, to vital services and each other, therefore be it resolved that council requests that an information report be presented with options for a passenger bus service, including possible funding opportunities to service to Swastika, Chapew Hughes, and the town of Kirkland Lake.
Thank you. Noting that, any further comments from council? Councillor Owens.
To present it this way, I don't think Kirkland Lake can afford to go down this road, so I cannot support like this, to investigate, spend money to investigate all the transportation.
Thank you. Anything further directly to the motion, councillor Dykens?
Yeah, um, I think as I said in my, um, introduction, um, I have two links to possible funding with this, uh, um, that are possible. I know, um, Mr. Van Toph said that he wasn't aware, but there are. And I think, uh, what I'm looking for is, um, just a report to see if it is possible, because I think things have changed, uh, with, for example, that technology. Uh, there's five students that live together and they want to go to, uh, Northern College Friday, uh, ADM. They, they put it in the app and, and then the bus comes and tells them when, so it, it's not a fixed route, um.
Yeah, I think we're leaving.
Okay, no, I just wanted to answer some of the.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, so I do apologize that I allowed it to deviate so far, um, at that time. So we're gonna just speak to the motion as written, um, requesting a report we brought back. Councillor Kylie.
I support what, uh, Dolly is, uh, saying and, uh, to cover what, uh, the, the costs. I'm not looking for a consultant's report, I'm looking for an in-house report, just to clarify. So we have staff here that they can do it.
Okay, and at this time, if there's no other comments, I'll have the reading of the motion so that we move on. Okay, councillor Owen.
Just, to, to rebut that, we have staff, but there's still costs associated through you, Madam Mayor, there's still a cost associated. We have to get staff, don't know what staff we're gonna have to do this, but need staff to spend the time however it takes to do their research and everything. So there's a cost. It, it's not costless, there is a cost associated, whether it's a consultant or an in-house thing, there's definitely a cost associated. Our staff will all work for free.
Okay, I will have a reading of the motion at this time. Go ahead, Madam Cork.
I was muted, I apologize. Moved by councillor Dolly Dykens, seconded by councillor La Chaba. Whereas a reliable transportation network to get people where they need to go on time safely and with minimal stress is absolutely critical to the economic and social well-being of a community. And whereas a key part of such a network is a well-functioning and convenient passenger bus system, and whereas the town of Kirkland Lake does not have a passenger bus service connecting its residents to vital services and each other, therefore be it resolved that council requests that an information report be presented with options for a passenger bus service, including possible funding opportunities to service Swastika, Chapew Hughes, and town of Kirkland Lake.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Item majority hasn't. Item carried. Item number eight, introduction, reading and consideration of bylaws. Item number eight point one, bylaw twenty-three dash oh three eight.
Okay, before I read the motion, um, Okay, before I read the motion, um, I do have some information to share with council on this bylaw. Uh, so this bylaw is being presented again for amendment as the Bereavement Authority of Ontario, so the BAO. Has amended its annual rate for cemetery operators to charge per activity, which includes each interment scattering or cremation. The fee has increased from thirteen dollars and sixty-three cents, which was what was passed by council in January. Per activity to thirty dollars per activity, one hundred percent, which is paid to the BAO annually. This is the only fee that is being proposed for amendment at this time, and it would take effect on July first. Subsequently, administration is recommending the town adopt a change of language for that fee. As sanctioned by the BAO, it used, uh, it still does read from licensing fee to Bereavement Authority of Ontario. Consumer protection fee. The reason for the BAO's recommend, recommendation to the town using this name. Uh, uh, the, those reasons are, it provides clarity to consumers. It builds trust by demonstrating the town's. And the bereavement sector's commitment to accountability. Answers the initial question, what is this for? Puts the reason for the fee on the BAO itself rather than on the town. Provides consistency and minimizes confusion when used by all or most bereavement sector businesses choosing to display it. And is the public's heavily preferred name. I will now read the motion. Moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read. Numbered pass signed by the mayor municipal clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty-three thirty-eight being a bylaw to amend by law twenty-one eleven, one eleven to establish fees for the Kirkland Lake Cemetery.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item number eight point two, bylaw twenty-three dash zero three nine.
Another note for council. Um, through inadvertence, uh, my, my inadvertence. The execution by law surrounding council's direction on March seventh to proceed with the extension agreement with GFL. For waste collection, disposal, and recycling was missed on that agenda. As such, it is being presented this evening to authorize the mayor municipal clerk in signing that extension agreement. So I will go ahead and read the motion. Moved by Counselor Patrick Kylie, seconded by Counselor La Chaba. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read numbered pass signed by the mayor municipal clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty-three thirty-nine being a bylaw to authorize the execution of an extension agreement. With Green for Life Environmental Inc., also known as GFL, for waste collection, disposal, and curbside recycling.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item eight point three, bylaw fifty-three dash zero four zero.
Moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Janice Ranger. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read. Numbered pass signed by the mayor municipal clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty-three forty being a bylaw to authorize the execution of an amending site plan control agreement for Fifty Good Fish Road. AA Bro Construction Limited.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item eight point four, bylaw twenty-three dash oh four one.
Moved by Counselor Janice Ranger, seconded by Counselor Patrick Kylie. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read. Numbered pass signed by the mayor municipal clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty-three forty-one being a bylaw to establish and require payment of various fees and charges. For the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake as amended.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item number nine, questions from council to staff. There were none. Item number ten, notices of.
Madam Mayor, there is, uh, one more, one more bylaw to read, to read.
Oh, sorry, I do, I do apologize. I'm giving ahead.
No problem.
Item number eight point five, bylaw fifty-three dash oh four three.
Moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor La Chaba. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read numbered pass. Signed by the mayor municipal clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty-three forty-three being a bylaw to authorize the execution of an easement, easement agreement with Hydro One Network Inc. Over a portion of mining claim three, sorry, not three, L five nine four one and mining claim L two eight eight zero.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item number nine, questions from council to staff. There were none. Item number ten, notices of motion. I do hereby give notice. That at the next regular council meeting, I will be bringing, um, an item called annual spring garbage pickup. Any other notices of motion? To give?
Yes.
Yeah, Counselor Ranger?
Uh, a motion to bring forward a report of expenses and fees associated with the airport.
Thank you. So noted. Any other notices of motion to be given this evening? None noted. Thank you. Counselors' reports. Anything from members of council? Counselor Owen?
Yes, um. On the, uh, Victoria Day weekend, I was doing some yard work at my church and fire department went by and. In their truck, our beautiful new truck, and they blew their horn at me. I guess they didn't figure I was working hard enough, but. So when I finished, I went by the fire hall and what I saw really impressed me. Our local fire department had put on a barbecue. For all first responders that had to work on the Sunday long weekend. So that included paramedics, it included community paramedics. And it included police officers and their fellow firefighters. And, uh, I just thought it was a wonderful thing for them to do. And, uh, they worked together under, um. Tense situations often, and I just thought it was a really nice. Reaching out to their, their fellow responders and, um, Circle K West supplied the, uh. The propane, uh, for the event. So, and from what I hear. Um, there'll be other similar events that they're going to be holding, and I think it's a great way for them to reach it. Now, um, the next one, I am going to really struggle to stay on, uh, on, on topic here. Um. An amazing thing happened on Sunday, May twenty-first, um. My latest granddaughter, who weighed in at four pounds, six ounces, was born. At the, uh, Blanche River Health, uh, Kirkland Lake Campus. Um, this is not about my granddaughter. This is about the loving, caring nurses, doctors, paramedics. I have never seen so much love in one room in all my life. Now, this was a high-risk pregnancy. The baby was supposed to be born, the new list, it said they would not birth the child. Supposed to be born in North Bay. Here we have Dr. Spiller, who calls in Dr. Kirky. Comes in on her own time on a Sunday night. And, yes, you could see the rush, but there was no panic. But the love that I saw, the caring that I saw. Was just amazing. Now, my daughter, this is my daughter's third child. She's had a child here now. And, and before I go on, we do not have the equipment to deliver babies here. Uh, they do have one birthing stretcher. Uh, but by the time they found it, uh, uh, what I can understand, it, it was too late. But we do not have the regular stuff here. Um. My daughter said a baby born here, a baby born in Oshank, and a baby born in the lister. The only place she mentioned about the caring doctors was Kirkland Lake. And it didn't just go to the doctors. I watched the nurses and whatever else health staff were there that night. And yeah, it was a pretty joyous occasion. This tiny baby came into the world and, and was fine. But the care they took to make sure, the paramedics to make sure. That I'm going to call it incubator, I believe they called it a baby separator. Was strapped on that stretcher properly. The nurse who took the extra care and said to me, I've been practicing. They had this little jacket that they, that goes in the incubator. And around the baby to hold the baby in place. And she checked about four other people. That she didn't have it too tight or too loose. Um. And I, I can't say the system is broken. There's no two ways in my mind. And I'm not going to go off there tonight. I was very good not to go off the jaw on that. The system is broken, but the people we have in Kirkland Lake are simply, simply amazing. Um, a few days later, I end up in a marriage myself. I don't know if that's a good thing or bad thing, but I can tell you, I saw the same level of care. Um. That I saw the night my, uh, my newest granddaughter Lily. We are so, so lucky. And the thing is, I was in a marriage for the full day. It was a busy day, and I was in the room right by the door. So every time the triage. Um, rang the bell, the nurse went out and I had to explain to them. It's going to be a long wait. We're very busy. And I saw, I won't say it, it goes to the level of abuse. But the annoyance that those nurses take every day. Just for doing their job. And then they come in and they treat a miserable old guy like me as if I'm special. Like, they're amazing. And so. Um. I may, uh, take the broken system up with MPP John Van To after I discuss it with my daughter. But right now I just want those doctors, those nurses, and all the other people who work at that hospital. To realize, yes, there are miserable patients. And they're miserable because they're sick and you understand that. But there are also patients that will really, really appreciate the extra money you go. And Lily's doing just fine. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that positivity with us, Counselor Owen. Counselor Shaba, you had your hands up as well?
Oh, yes, I did. Um, I'd just like to put on my, uh. Uh, visit to the community living on May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, if you were having this coming this year, seven, six year anniversary. Um, there are a lot of things that, uh, uh, first of all, that is, it's nice to see all the old friends. That are community, whatnot, all, all, but you had known for years, literally correct here. Uh, but a lot of things that I didn't know that those guys of, uh, uh, that, that, what they, what they done and what their. Uh, I don't, I don't fact about another college, but I worked there for almost thirty years, but this is very illuminating to me. That major employer for North Miskin, and you only have six point nine million dollar budget. Six point nine million dollar budget and seventy-five, ninety-four time, a prime time staff. That's really amazing. Well, other than time like us, I, I don't even know if, uh, anybody has any figure about, uh, how much money is going to this community. Uh, uh, but again, this is what I know, that's, uh, that's quite a bit, uh, in our, in our area. And the, the other things that I really, uh, still find very interesting. Uh, which is for the better, uh, for the better relative to community, is the name change over time. Uh, well, before my age, you know, when we used to call them. Their organization before and now is a well-paying, they call them community living of Kirkland Lake. They are one of us. They are members of our community and I really, uh, appreciate that name change. And it's an evolution, but it's a fitting evolution. So, uh, I'd like to thank them for inviting me. The mayor was there too. Uh, they fed us for lunch. I never refuse a free lunch. I appreciate it. So, kudos to those, and I wish them, uh, many, many years, uh, oh, that's it.
Thank you, Counselor Shaba. Counselor Kylie?
To you, your worship. A couple things to report. I attended the, uh, DSA meeting. Uh, basically reviewed and accepted the audited statements and a few miscellaneous items. Uh, also I tended, I'm a board member of the family health team. Uh, they presented the strategic plan for this year. And I'm pleased to report, uh, the area of blood services, which we. Had passed a resolution, uh, to the Ministry of Health. Um, that, uh, this is being dealt with and on June the twelfth. Um, I believe we will have some good news coming. Um, thanks to, uh. The community, uh, partners, uh, working together to, uh, to address this issue. So I think people will be quite pleased with, with that, uh, results in that.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Kylie. Anything more for members of council? Okay, I'll receive with the report from the office of the mayor. Since our last meeting, May sixteenth, the office of the mayor has attended the lunch for community living. Uh, Thursday, the eighteenth with Counselor Shaba. Attended the two S LGBTQ plus steering committee, THU governance meeting, and library board meeting. We unveiled the pride crosswalk with council member Janice Ranger. It was an incredibly positive event, which included many students from both local high schools. Local members of the health and service industries like THU and DSA. And representatives all the way from Timiscaming Pride and Timmins Pride. Speakers included myself, Vekta Ford of Timmins Pride, as well as MP Charlie Angus and MPP John Van To. It was so lovely to have Kirkland Lake featured on CTV News with such a feel-good story. Um, I had the honor of speaking at the Northern College Commencation Ceremony on Friday, May twenty-sixth. Which really meant a lot to me because I am a alumna myself of Northern College. On Wednesday, I joined other female leaders across the north in our virtual, um, Northern Ontario Women's Caucus meeting. And in that meeting, it was decided that we will be opening our ranks to all elected officials. So we're going to look forward to that once our terms of reference are completed. This past Saturday, I had the pleasure of attending the annual ceremony, ceremonial review. Of the two eighty-eight Royal Canadian Air Cadet Squadron at Northern College. Their numbers are increasing, and that's incredible to see that this kind of time-honored, um, commitment to. Military and to that lifestyle is coming back in our small community. It was really a pleasure. I met with, uh, the four grade one classes of Saint Jerome yesterday. And gave them a brief overview at six-year-old level of how council does their job. And a brief history of politics in Kirkland Lake. And earlier today, I was honored to meet with the new Legion Branch eighty-seven president, Mr. Kevin Carl. And then I attended the Chamber of Commerce Director's meeting. So that is my report for this two weeks. Madam Clark?
Moved by Counselor Dolly Dyken, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. Be it resolved that the verbal updates from members of council be received.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item number twelve, additional information. There is none at this time. At this time, we will take a brief recess to go into closed session in about ten minutes.
Are you ready to go, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, Madam Clark, I'll have you read the motion to move into in camera.
Moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor Dolly Dyken. Be it resolved that council adjourn in camera at six forty-one PM. Pursuant to section two thirty-nine two of the Municipal Act two thousand and one as amended to discuss a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land. By the municipality or local board for the following reason. Item thirteen point one, request to purchase fifty-six Hudson Bay Avenue.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Thank you. I'll have the motion ready to rise.
Moved by Counselor La Chaba, seconded by Counselor Janice Ranger. Be it resolved that council reconvene in open session at six forty-eight PM.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried. Uh, there was, uh, was there any declaration of culinary interest during closed session? There was none. Item fourteen point one matters from closed session, request to purchase fifty-six Hudson Bay.
Moved by Counselor Patrick Kylie, seconded by Counselor La Chaba. Be it resolved that report number twenty-two-three D E V twenty-four. Entitled supplemental request to purchase fifty-six Hudson Bay Avenue be received. And that, and that council approve the sale of land at fifty-six Hudson Bay Avenue to Sebastian Miss Trilly for the amount of ten thousand forty dollars. And that council authorize the mayor municipal clerk to execute the offer to purchase and all appropriate sale documents as may be. And that council authorize the mayor municipal clerk to execute the offer to purchase and all appropriate sale documents as may be required. And finally, that council authorize the bylaw of the sale of the property be given three readings at an upcoming meeting.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item number fifteen, confirmation bylaw.
Moved by Counselor Dolly Dykens, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read, numbered pass, signed by the mayor municipal clerk and the seals of corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty-three forty-two, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held June sixth, two thousand twenty-three.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried. Item number sixteen, adjournment.
Moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Janice Ranger. Be it resolved that this regular meeting of council do now adjourn at six forty-nine P M.
All in favor? Opposed? Item carried unanimous. That's it.